Okay. Correct?
Yes.
He's yes, too.
Has anybody heard from Commissioner Minser?
I don't know.
She may be running late, so we can excuse her if she's not here in a ten minutes. Okay. Acknowledgements, announcements, communications, and reports, do we have any? We have two here, but do we have any from the board?
Just a couple of meetings to, with the holiday this week, some meetings are off schedule. So on September 4th, the Beautification Committee will meet at seven o'clock at the Mount Clemens Public Library. The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for September 4th has been canceled. And the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on September 4th at seven o'clock here at City Hall.
Okay. The first announcement here we have is Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership presentation for the Mount Clemens Sculpture Program. And Mr. Bruley is here.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. We would like to invite anyone in the viewing area in the City Commission to join us in what will be our second year of the sculpture program in South Mount Clemens. We had a very successful first year where we had eight sculptures that were placed through host agreements with various people and sponsorships with various people. And the program was entirely paid for by the graciousness of people in the community. And we're off for our second year. We would like to increase the number if possible. What happened at the beginning of October is those sculptures presently in the city will be removed, except for two which we know will be purchased and will be permanently placed in different parts of the city. They're being purchased by groups or individuals to add to the city in general. So we would welcome anybody who wants to participate through the mayor to just get ahold of us. And we'll explain all the details and appreciate anyone's participation.
Okay, great. Any questions you may have here? All right. And now we're going to have the presentation of certificates of appreciation to the Macomb Cultural Economic Partnership. And...
We had over the past...
Why don't you explain it? Why don't you explain it?
We had over the past summer about thirteen to fifteen students who participated in a summer youth program whereby they were paid to help improve the look of the city by encouraging clean streets. They worked on Southbound Greshit, South Main Street, and Northbound Greshit. And they would work every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for two hours in the evening from five to seven o'clock and picking up trash. And they had an adult leader, each group, and they would work in teams of four people. We had some alternates, but I think they did an exceptionally good job. I know that because I had to haul the trash out of our garage every so often. And they would each accumulate two to four bags on a go. So there's a lot of stuff out there to collect. And we really appreciate the work that they did. Tonight, since school started today, we have a few of the students here, not all. This is a busy time for them. And we appreciate the commission's gratitude to them. Thank you.
Could you, Ed, could you tell us who the adult people were, the names?
Sure. We had a gentleman named Coach, what he went by. And he is a person who volunteers at the schools in the Seminole School and does coaching there, Mr. Moreany. And then we had Mr. Robinson, who was part of the Optimists Club in Mount Clemens, who was the other adult leader.
Jamie?
Jamie was not... No, thank you. This is Ariel.
Okay, Ariel. Ariel Smith, in appreciation of your efforts for helping to keep Mount Clemens clean and beautiful, we'd like to present you with your certificate of recognition. And thank you very much for your work. Appreciate it. Zachary, okay, Zachary. In appreciation for all your efforts, what you did this summer, we appreciate the fact that you helped to clean up Mount Clemens and keep it nice and clean at the south end. Took your time, which you could probably be doing a lot of other things. We appreciate your help in doing this, so thank you so much. Miles. Same thing, Miles. Thank you so much for taking the time and doing this. It really did show. And I did see a lot of those bags being dragged by your supervisors there, or at least the adult supervisors. So I know you had a lot of trash to take care of. And when Ed calls and says, "I have too much trash to take home, where do I go?" We know how much trash you guys picked up, so thank you so much for doing this. This is to the Cultural Economic and Partnership for recognizing the importance of keeping Mount Clemens clean and beautiful and providing the resources and the help that you have. And the goal to keep the south end clean.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Adoption of the agenda, need a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule. The mic is open. Come on up.
I just have to raise my hand. Excuse me. My name's Mike Zubis, 221 Cass Avenue. I wanted to talk about a different subject today. A subject that I've recently became more interested in as news has come out about developments of this. It's called, it's a thing called ransomware. But specifically, this thing called WannaCry that is used as this ransomware genre of viruses has been spreading around. Recently, it's been spreading around to local governments, which has been very concerning. Baltimore's been hit. There's a couple cities in Florida. And the most concerning part is these twenty-two cities in the state of Texas that have all been hit. It's all local governments. So I wanted to express some ideas to help our local government in understanding and hopefully preventing any attacks from happening so that we don't end up having to pay fifty thousand dollars out of nowhere to somebody that may or may not give us our stuff back. So the first thing is, is to look at the copies of Windows and see if you can upgrade it to the latest version. If not, maybe find a later one. The latest version of Windows is pretty much given out for free, Windows 10. I'm not sure how it works with the government, but they built it after the WannaCry attacks, mostly, I believe, because of the attacks, the subset of Windows stuff, the real nitty-gritty of how Windows works. It knows how to use that and the network. And step two is to have people understand that if you see a random program that you don't think is there, don't click on it, don't touch it, don't do anything. Contact an IT administrator to have them come in and use a specific program. Because the second you touch it or click on it, it activates, and that's when it starts doing its thing, propagates. And it basically, it locks down all your files and turns it into a different file and then spreads it around through the network. This is the crazy part. At the same time it's working, it sends out all these data things to different computers and then goes to those computers. So it can propagate. It acts like an actual, like, physical virus. It's so interesting that we've come that far. It's kind of weird, but I find it interesting. But the third thing, let's see if this is... Trying to remember the third thing. Oh, jeez. I think that's all, really. I mean, the prevention part is the real thing. You have to prevent it from happening so that the awareness to all the people within the city administration to not do that is the real big thing here. Because it takes human interaction to get it to start. If every human inside the city understands how to fight this, then we won't have this happen. And we won't have to worry about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
Hi, I'm Deborah Arlington, 21 Brightmire Place. I just wanted to understand more about the water situation. Over the past month or so, we've been experiencing the taste of mold in the water. And I've also noticed it in the past months. It seems to come and go. And I understand that there is a fix that's coming in October. But I just really want to understand the finances associated with it. I mean, did we, the Water Department did not have enough money to purchase this piece of equipment previously? And it took a long time to order it? Or I just want to understand more about that. And I want to feel assured that after October, I'm going to be able to drink my water from the tap again. Because right now, I'm buying all of my water. And I think that I pay a pretty good amount of money for my water bill, that I shouldn't have to do that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Sweth. We've been communicating on...
Susan, can you go to the mic, please? And where do you live?
170 Cracker Boulevard. We've been communicating on next door. This is a sample of the water. We've had responses from you and others on the board saying that there's nothing wrong with it. There is. It smells like dirt. It tastes like mold. We can't use it to cook. We can't use it to make coffee. We're using bottled water for everything. I don't even like to shower in it. And this has been going on for quite some time. And I think enough is enough.
Thank you. Anyone else? Administrative responses to issues? We have none. Need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented from the meeting, previous meeting?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen, thank you.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, General Business, 9A, request approval to renew the Michigan Department of Transportation State Trunk Line Maintenance Contract. I need a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution approving the 2019 through 2024 State Trunk Line Maintenance Contract, MDOT number 2019-0736 as presented, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and enter into the agreement.
Support.
The Michigan Department of Transportation is requesting the renewal of the attached contract with the city of Mount Clemens for routine maintenance on state trunk line highways. The contract is for a five-year term period from October 1st, 2019, through September 30th, 2024, for routine maintenance along Northbound M3 and Southbound M3 within the city limits of Mount Clemens. Upon adoption of the attached resolution, a copy of the resolution, a certificate of insurance, and copies of applicable union agreements, which include the Macomb Supervisor Employee Association Contract and the Macomb Municipal Employees Association Contract, will be provided to MDOT per the contract agreement.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, can you give me a thumbnail sketch or a brief overview of how this works? So do you incur the cost? Does the city incur the cost and then we submit the bills to MDOT? Or do we get a stipend? Or how does that work?
So, yeah, so we track any maintenance that is done on the MDOT roads and right away, from lawn mowing and snow removal, and we bill that back to MDOT quarterly.
So you send a bill every quarter for what we've incurred? Okay. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Minser?
I just wondered, who is the contract administrator for the city? Section number four says we have a contract administrator.
That was myself.
That's you? That's what I thought. I just want clarification. Okay. And keeping with Commissioner Fournier's question, we also have some leeway as far as overages, over and under, you know, what the contract states, that if we have to do work that's beyond, we have a percentage that we can go through?
Yes, and actually, there is a representative that I work with that gives us what their projected budget is for this work. And if we do something out of the ordinary, we just contact them, they amend the budget, and we bill accordingly.
Right, there you go. All right, I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Bunton?
I guess it's not necessarily a question, maybe it's a request. Can we do something about the quality of work that's being done? Because on the northbound side, before you get to Cracker, there's just every, so far you go to twenty or thirty feet or whatever, there's a bump. And then there's another bump, and another bump, where those, the seams were never milled or seamed or not smooth. It's just a minor complaint, but it just, it doesn't speak well for the city when we drive down and you get this scrubboard type of...
That doesn't fit into this routine maintenance contract. The routine maintenance, again, covers like the sweepane, snow removal, lawn maintenance, that type of stuff. I can certainly send you, I will certainly send a request out to MDOT.
Appreciate it.
But it's...
It's different.
Yeah. It falls under a completely different area.
Okay. I just wanted to voice it and see what we could do, but thanks anyway.
Commissioner Krab?
I was just looking under the grass and weed control and wondering if we can build them a little more so we can control the weeds on Southbound and Northbound Greshit a little bit more.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
9B, adopt a resolution recommending consideration for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to approve an on-premise testing room permit for the World Variety?
Viral.
Viral?
Viral.
Viridal, okay. Got to look that one up.
It's a wine thing. It's a wine thing.
It's a wine thing. I guess I'd... Viridal LLC. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Go ahead.
The teachers had answered, you know, this thing.
Move to approve the attached resolution recommending that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission consider for approval the application of World Veritel Winery LLC for an on-premises testing room at 104 Macomb Place.
Support.
Yeah.
World Viridal Winery LLC, a Michigan limited liability company to be located at 104 Macomb Place in an effort to provide the best experience for their guests and network with existing downtown restaurants, are seeking to obtain City Commission approval of a resolution to recommend a permit for an on-premises tasting room. Pursuant thereto, the attached resolution is being presented for City Commission approval to recommend that the application of World Viridal Winery LLC for an on-premises tasting room located at 14104 Macomb Place be considered for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Krab?
I'm really excited.
Commissioner Minser?
I was just going to say, welcome to town.
Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Krab?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of purchase payments and invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Minser?
I'm looking at a couple of things here. I was just looking at the salt. That's like a 6.5% increase. Okay.
Okay.
So that's a lot. That's a lot more than we had last year or the year before, so that's why.
There goes the budget.
Yeah.
And it's less than some previous years as well, so...
Okay. And I was looking at the bids for the computer services. And on high-tech, it specifically mentions RMC pricing. But it doesn't mention that on CDWG, it mentions the MyDeal contract. You can get RMC and GSA pricing from CDWG and from Apple. And I wondered if somebody knew that.
I'm not sure. And if that is the case, I would assume that the RMC pricing, which was similar or better than the other pricing, I don't know why we would go with a different manufacturer, a different supplier than who we currently use, if that's the case.
Well, I guess that's...
We're doing.
Because you're just talking about hardware. The hardware can be the same no matter who supplies it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. And so why would I, why would I, why would I use someone out of Vernon Hills, who's not our current vendor, for the same pricing that my existing vendor can get it to me?
Well, I don't see...
I mean, if that's what you propose that I do, I can certainly do that. But it is, you know, I can certainly look at doing that.
Well, usually with CDWG, you have to ask them or tell them that you want RMC or GSA pricing. I do this like every day at work, you know, for the county. Apple will do it, too, if you ask them. But I just saw that it only indicated high-tech was giving us RMC pricing. So if you're confident that, you know, their price is going to be better with the MyDeal, I guess that's up to you. But I just wondered why we didn't ask for the same thing.
And again, and I don't, I would assume that that was asked for. I don't know what, if this was the best price that these other vendors were offering.
Okay.
I'm sure that's what was asked for, is the best price. And if the MyDeal was the best price that that particular vendor was offering, I don't know why they would have, if a different pricing was better, I don't know why they wouldn't have provided us with that price.
Because you have to ask.
Well, we ask for the best pricing that you have, right? I mean, it's not like... I don't, I don't know where you're, exactly where you're going with that.
Is it, is it part of the bid process to call people and ask them to give us some kind of special pricing or whatever? Or we just send out the bids and whoever responds to them responds to their best offer?
Right.
Yeah. So responding to their best offer, we don't have to call them and ask them for special qualifications or whatever?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Minser?
No.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Minser?
Yes.
City managers' report.
City officers were closed on Monday, September 2nd. In observance of Labor Day, refuse pickup will run one day behind schedule from September 2nd through the rest of the week. The annual Soapbox Derby Pancake Breakfast will be held on Saturday, September 7th, from 7:30 a.m. until 11 a.m. at the Mount Clemens Fire Department. Adults are $5, seniors $4, and children 11 and under $3. Proceeds will be donated to local charities. Please come and support this worthwhile cause. The annual Mount Clemens Grand Prix Soapbox Derby Race will take place on Saturday, September 7th. Weather pending at 10 a.m. on the Cracker Bridge. For more information, please contact 586-468-7746. And the Farmers Market on North River Road will be hosting their annual Tater Pork Roast on Saturday, September 14th, from 9 a.m. until it is sold out. The market will be open from 7 a.m. until 1 p.m. For additional information, please contact the Macomb County Chamber at 586-493-7600.
Any questions? Okay. Commissioner comments? Mr. Campbell?
I would like to thank the students for their cleanup in the city here. First impressions are lasting impressions, so thank you very much for that. Thank you to the residents who came in regarding the water. And also, I'd like to give best wishes to Commissioner Ford for a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Commissioner Krab?
Coming up at the end of September, Mickey and I are correct in saying Art Party is September 23rd?
Six.
Six.
Six, 26th. Art Party, tickets are available at the Anton Art Center website. It's always a great event. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Mickey. And it doesn't usually, it never disappoints. So get your tickets for that event. I, too, would like to thank the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership. They did a great job with the sculpture program. I really enjoyed, my kids and I went around and took pictures by the sculptures and read all the plaques. And it was a really neat experience to just have some art within Mount Clemens. And the idea that it's going to change, I really like that. It's going to be fresh. No one gets tired of looking at the same horse at Shady Side Park, I guess. So it'll be, it'll be a neat experience. Yeah, so, and of course, for the cleanup program, I think we could use all the help with that that we can. I was really impressed with seeing the students out there Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They diligently worked, and I thank them for their service to that. I would like to ask again for the city administration to look into a text notification system. I think the water problem with the, you know, there's a, we know what's going on and we can better notify people. The text notification systems are done in lots of different cities. People get to opt into them. It's not a mandatory. And it just sends out a really easy alert to people. And I think it's a great way to communicate with residents. And in this day and age, we know that communication is expected as a way of customer service. And so I'd like to see us do that. Also, I want to just close with, I'm really looking forward to all of the great events that is going to hap, that are happening in the city this weekend. We have the Soapbox Derby and the Pancake Breakfast at the Fire Hall. Come out and support the firefighters. Come and support the kids with the Soapbox Derby. It'll be a fun, a fun weekend. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Bruley, Ed Bruley, and the work he's did with the kids, as well as the sculptures and the things that he is anticipating doing in the future with some of the facades within the city. It's a great work, and I love it when people commit themselves to the city and do really cool things within the city. It just, it shows a bunch of city pride. And I think city pride is something that we all have to have if we want this city to continue to grow and to look good. I guess I was debating on whether to mention in my commissioner comments the 9/11 situation that has in passed. But even though it's not something that we should celebrate, I think we can celebrate the fact that we have overcome the damage that was done by 9/11. The buildings were torn down, were burned down. They themselves weren't replaced, but better, and other buildings have been created in their place. People are back on track and doing the things that they want to do. So it did not destroy our nation, not only for down in New York, but the other places that were targeted as well. not only for down in, in New York, but the other places that were targeted as well. But I congratulate those people, and I'm so sorry for the people who went and worked in the field trying to clear the debris and rescue people, because now they are ill, and they need help, financial help, and I hope our government continues to reach out to them and help them. With that said, Commissioner comments, also, special weeks to celebrate. Suicide Prevention Week is eighth through fourteenth of this month. That's a serious problem and situation in this country, in our society, and, and thirty, forty years ago, I would not, not have anticipated it being what it is now, but there's so much frustration that there is a problem with suicide prevention, so if you know of anybody that is having a problem, encourage them to seek help. Pollution Prevention Week is also from the fifteenth through the twenty-first. Prostate Cancer Awareness Week is also from the fifteenth to the twenty-first. And for men, it may be an uncomfortable situation, but you need to have your prostate checked. If you don't, you could be exposing yourself to some very serious medical problems. I encourage you to bite the bullet and, and set aside your personal inhibitions and go ahead and get yourself checked out. Month-long celebrations, Hispanic Heritage Month this month, and National Self Improvement Month this month, and that's something we all can look forward to work with. Special days to celebrate, September second, which has already passed, but I thought I'd mention it anyway, a formal ceremony announcing the world, that the World War Two had come to an end. Japan surrendered to Allied forces, officially ending World War Two. That was a ceremony that, that actually ended it, of course, it actually stopped, the fighting stopped weeks before that. September seventh, neither snow nor rain. This is not the motto of the United States Postal Service, as many have been led to believe. It celebrates the opening of the New York Postal Office Building in nineteen fourteen. These words were inscribed on the building. Neither snow nor rain, not heat nor gloom of night stays these couriers from the swift completion of their rounds. And so nevertheless, no matter how it is, this is a day to salute and show appreciation to the mail carriers in your neighborhood. And if you don't, you could also give them a nice Christmas gift when the time comes. September thirteenth, Friday thirteenth, a day of superstition. It is considered an unlucky, unlucky day, a day when bad things can happen. Whatever you do, don't let a black cat cross your path. Don't step on a crack or walk under a ladder. It ju- that just makes good sense, if you walk under a ladder and people are working on it, you're asking for trouble. Also, there are those that use Friday the thirteenth as a day to defy superstition. They choose to challenge existing superstitions, so whichever side you're on, take this day to celebrate, whichever way you want to. And September fifteenth, Wife Appreciation Day, always the third Sunday in September. The objective of this special day is for wives without children to receive special treatment from their husband. This day is for husbands to recognize the value of their wives. Special dinner, presents, flowers, or just a special moment together should be on the schedule for that particular day. So husbands, today, treat your better half as you would like to be treated yourself. And for Commissioner Wisdom for the night, Bad Habits Are Like A Comfortable Bed, Easy To Get Into But Hard To Get Out Of, unknown author. A Compromise Is An Agreement Whereby Both Parties Get What Neither Of Them Want. And that's by an unknown. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Within the last two weeks, I had a resident send me pictures of a fall that they took and the injuries they sustained in walking on our sidewalks in the city. And they were walking down a very nice street, in one of the nicest streets we have in the city, and it highlights the problem that these sidewalks need to be fixed. And homeowners are responsible to fix their own sidewalks. They don't wait till the city has to, you know, give them a violation or mark their sidewalk. We need to get these sidewalks fixed, and this person is very banged up and very frustrated, her sidewalk is all fixed. But, and she doesn't want to be named, but there is, we have a responsibility, if we have a home in this city, to comply with the ordinances and to keep our sidewalks safe. And I would also challenge the city to do that as well, because downtown could certainly use some help. So we all have to kind of look at the situation, and for the sake of, we want to be a walking city, we want the trees, we want all this. This is part of our, who we are, but we have to take care of it as well. And on a more positive note, I just do want to commend Ariel and Zachary and Miles and the other students that took part in the city cleanup. That's commendable, it's not a, necessarily could be not a great job, not a fun job, but we really appreciate their efforts. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
I'm a firm believer that art brings economics. And so I thank the Macomb Cultural and Economic Partnership for bringing this art into our community. Together with the artwork that has been happening from the grants gotten by the Anton Art Center, the murals that you see around town, there are some great artwork in our city, and I believe firmly that that great artwork that we see will help spur economic development. I believe that firmly. So the Battling Bathers, the Battling Bathers under their new coach, Marcus Cribs, won their first game last Friday, August twenty-ninth, thirty to nothing. This was the first time winning their first game of the season in over twenty-two years. So congratulations to the Battling Bathers. There was, yeah, let's give my hand. We have some senior wide receivers that were outstanding. Don Williams, he's one of the captains, Don Williams rushed for like two hundred yards and got three touchdowns. Vermont Cannon, Cannon and Armani Cannon both did an awesome job. So it would be really nice if we started going to these games and supporting our high school and supporting these kids. It's, the next game is this Friday, the sixth, but I'm encouraging and asking and begging all of you to please come to the homecoming game on October eleventh. It will mean everything for these kids to have, you know, a full set of stands out there, so please keep that in mind. And I wanna piggyback off Commissioner Bunton, next week on nine eleven, out in front of our courthouse, the county's courthouse out in front on Main Street here, there is the Fallen Heroes Monument, and we will be having a ceremony out there that starts at seven o'clock. If you want to participate in the short walk at six forty-five, but there will be, the Sheriff Department Honor Guard will be there, the Twenty-One Gun Salute will happen, and the fire truck, our fire truck, along with, I think, Chesterfield's ladder truck will be suspending the American flag over the street. It is a very moving ceremony, last time, there were quite a few Patriot Riders that came. It's an, it's an awesome way to honor those who have fallen and those who participated, and as Commissioner Bunton said, you know, helped clean out that, that debris and got sick themselves. So please keep that in mind for next week, and that's what I have.
Thank you. Just a couple things, the questions that were brought up tonight will be responded at the next meeting, but if you'd like some information sooner than what you've already received, if you would give your phone number to one of these two people here, they will call you, but it will be made public again next week. But I do encourage you to go to the Mount, I mean, next meeting, I'm sorry, next week, the Mount Clemens Facebook page, which is, they have put out there, the information also, so. But please do, give them your phone number if you want to hear from them, okay? And the other thing is, go to, when we do have issues, you know, a lot of us answer on Facebook, we try to get the word out there as, as much as we can and what we can, and that, but I find by doing that, it just really starts this ball rolling that just gets so far out of whack that the original concern got lost in this long track. And the next thing we know, if we take, for instance, the water, we're flint, we're not flint, okay? So call, please, I, I ask people, don't go on Facebook and just start talking about things. If you really want to know what's going on, call City Hall. Call any one of your commissioners here, every one of them. If they're on the webpage, if you're not on the webpage, you call City Hall. You want to speak to Commissioner Bunton, they'll get, they'll get in touch with Commissioner Bunton, they'll get back with you. Please do that, because you can really help curtail some of the issues and problems that we see so much on social media. So do that, please, that way you're informed, we're informed, you know, the facts are there, and, and we're working together. That's what we're here for, so. With that being said, I need a motion to go into exec.
Move to, move to move, to executive session, there's a lot of moves.
Support. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? We'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed?